Good morning. I'd like to call to Order County Council's preliminary agenda meeting for February 16th, 2021. But please rise. We'll pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, independent, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you. Tomorrow night, we will be accepting public comment at the beginning of the meeting for any matters that are on the agenda, and we will be accepting public comments both at this meeting and tomorrow night for any matters that are not on the agenda. Public comments can be phoned in to (610) 891-4931, or they can be emailed to publiccomment@co.delawarepa.us. Please leave your name and address so that we can read it into the record. I guess the next agenda item calls for the approval of minutes of the regular meeting of February 3rd, 2021. Any questions or comments on those minutes? Our hearing done. We'll move on to agenda item number five. Tomorrow night will be a COVID and vaccination update. I don't know that we're going to have anything this morning. I believe we are busy vaccinating and otherwise trying to care for the health of our county. So we will, unless anybody has anything further on agenda item number five, we will look to hear more from Dr. Owen Miss Halt tomorrow night. All right, moving on to agenda item number six. This calls for the approval of a resolution endorsing the concept of the 911 NMT and its passage through Delaware County. I don't know if anybody on council is prepared to present this, or Mr. Martin or Mr. Lichtenstein want to help us out here?
Well, I am happy to present it since I brought it to our council. This is the September 11th Memorial Trail is a 1,300-mile series of connected, pre-existing and planned trails. It's basically a big triangle that connects the three sites that were involved in the September 11th attacks. The nonprofit organization that runs this is asking all of the communities through which the trail runs to voice their support of the concept of this trail. This is not any kind of ask for financial commitment at all, but they are collecting support from all the communities through which it runs as that that will help with the federal funding and designation of this as a national asset. And I will say, in full disclosure, I was a member of that board of this organization. I am not now, but in the past I was. Several sections of it include the Schuylkill River Trail, which is a trail that I, my job builds and maintains. The section of trail that goes through Delaware County that is included in the 911 trail is the East Coast Greenway that goes up the coast of Delaware County into, from Delaware into Philadelphia. And this is a really poignant effort that this, that this trail group has put together, and hopefully it will grow into a national treasure.
Thank you, Ms. Shaver. Any questions or comments from council? All right, we'll move on to agenda item number seven then, which is a resolution recognizing February as Black History Month. Did anyone on council wish to present this today?
I'll just talk a little bit about it. It's just a resolution that recognizes Black History Month and all the various celebrations that are going on around the county, including some of which we are doing in combination with the library system.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor. Any questions or comments on agenda item number seven? All right, moving on to agenda item number eight. This calls for the approval to submit a grant application to the Pennsylvania Insurance Fraud Prevention Authority. And we have Mr. Stolzheimer here to present this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, we've been getting this grant for the last 20 years from this authority that was created under state law. The funds that come to the authority are from assessments on insurance policies written in the state. So it's not taxpayer money, but it's used to give out to law enforcement agencies to go after fraud and hopefully lower insurance rates by doing so. We're one of 13 law enforcement agencies that get grants from the authority. And this is a grant that supports the salaries for two detectives who work on this and one prosecutor, or part of the salary of a prosecutor who brings these cases into court.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Stolzheimer? All right, thank you, Mr. Stolzheimer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, agenda item number nine calls for the approval to repair dry sprinkler components in several buildings at Fair Acres. And we have Jamie Pastore to present this, this agenda item.
Good morning, Chairman and members of council. I'm here, of course, to seek approval for the repair. And it's funny we say repair because this is turning into a capital project because it is indeed a project. This has come about because we had to do an internal dry system sprinkler inspection, which actually has never been done before and it was never enforced by the local Department of Life Safety. Normally, we do a regular dry system trip, and that was good enough. And a trip is basically you trip the alarm and make sure that these components open. These dry systems, they actually are dealing with the unconditioned spaces of certain buildings. And that's like above in the attic or refrigerated areas. So the normal sprinkler systems are already energized with water. These systems are energized with air, and it's sort of a pressurized air that holds back the water with a clapper. And it's like 40 PSI against 20 PSI of the water. So what would happen in the event of a sprinkler being tripped? The actual clapper would open, releasing the water into the system, and then, of course, to extinguish a fire. Now, because there never had, we never had an internal inspection, these components have worn. Whether it be springs and valves, they've corroded to the point of needing to be replaced. Now, normally, any repair, when you use the word repair, you look at your operational budget. But being that this is a combination of components over $500 combined with the labor, it's a project. Now, that would be your decision whether we go ahead with the capital to expedite the parts being over $500 and getting, capturing that in capital versus throwing it into the operational budget would be the best way to go. Breaking it down, that you have like almost $20,000 in parts and around 16, 5 in labor. So that will be up to council to have this go out to bid because the company who performed the inspection, it was under contract. Our contract goes out every year. There's several components of the contract which are wet, dry, kitchen hood, backflow preventers, et cetera. So this all goes out in a bundle. And this company, SA Communal, was the one who had to perform this service for us, this inspection. And they, this is what they found. So what we can do is send this out to five other companies or four other companies. So we have a total of five, and they can bid on the actual components and labor.
Thank you. I note that the, the agenda item says that funding of this comes from Medicaid. Can you walk us through how that works?
Hopefully Bill D'Amico is on this call. He will be able to answer that. I really, I don't know that component of it, the Medicaid component. I know Bill D'Amico, hopefully he's on this call and he can answer that question. If he's not, I can get back to you on Wednesday, tomorrow night, and give you that information.
Okay. I don't think he's here with us this morning. So yeah, we could get back tomorrow night on that.
Sure.
Any other questions or comments from council? I guess for my own part, you know, I always advocate for getting things bid. I think the code suggests that, well, it doesn't suggest it, says that we should unless there's some exception. So I would be in favor of getting additional bids to see that we get the best bang for the buck, whether it's Delaware County tax dollars or state or federal.
Sounds good.
All right, if there's nothing further from council, then I will wish you a good day. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to agenda item number 10. This calls for the approval to purchase 50 new all-in-one vital sign machines. And we have Casey Kaminsky here to present this. Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. So Fair Acres is seeking the approval.
I'm sorry, it's difficult to hear you, ma'am.
Is that better?
I think a little bit. Yep. If you could just speak up, please. Thank you.
So Fair Acres is seeking the approval for purchase of new vital sign machines to provide care for our residents. Throughout the course of a day, several residents on each of our resident care units require monitoring of vital signs. Due to the current pandemic, all residents have required at minimum daily monitoring, and many require more frequent monitoring. As a result of the undue stressors placed on the current machines, many are beginning to fail or have already failed. And to continue providing the necessary care, the purchase of supplemental equipment was required as manual rechecks of critical values were needed. Many machines have been removed from service completely due to mechanical failure, and all warranties at this point have expired. They expired in 2019. So replacement parts have been difficult to obtain for the current machines that we have as they're currently, there's no foreseen restocks available. So the nursing department formed a committee to review and evaluate a new vital sign machine. We had previously looked at Medline, Welsh Allen, General Electric was the one that was chosen. Parts are readily available. They're locally manufactured. The machines that we currently have were not. So we're requesting the machines be purchased through McKesson Medical, who are currently on state contract. And that's, that's our request.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify. So with the state contract, is that effectively the equivalent of costars? I mean, they're, it's a, it's a pre-negotiated price and there's no need to bid it?
Correct.
Okay, and it sounds like you certainly, in looking for replacement parts, I take it, and I noted there's a two-year warranty on most of it and a three-year warranty on part of it. Since part of the issue seems to be durability, did, did you take, did your committee take a look at that? Like, you know, how long these, this equipment remains in service?
Yes. The machines that we currently have, well, the machines that we, we tested and trialed seem much more durable than the ones that we currently have right now.
Okay, did you do any, did you do any due diligence with other people who've used them?
We, we did not. We can look into that.
Yeah, would you, would you maybe just see if there's, if you can get before tomorrow night's meeting? Because if, it, I mean, I don't have any problem at all with the purchase. And I, and I applaud you guys for going through a process and looking at things like, like spare parts and access to repairs. But it, since that was the main problem with the previous machines, that you're taking out of service at a rather alarming rate, it would be helpful just to make sure that we've checked the durability on these new machines so people, you know, if it turns out to be a problem, we can at least say we checked, we asked around. I'm sure the manufacturer can give you a couple of other providers who use their machines and can share their experience before tomorrow night's meeting.
We can, we can absolutely look into that.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Can I just clarify? This is in your budget for 2021. It's not an unforeseen expense. Am I understanding that correctly?
Correct.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And Ms. Kaminsky, do you have any more insight into the sort of parenthetical noting funding is Medicare or Medicaid?
Through the facility, our funding comes from Medicare and Medicaid.
Okay, that is billed separately as a facility charge to Medicaid? Or it's billed as through the patient monies that one gets for caring for a patient?
We can, I can ask specifically, we can look into that. But it, it's, our funding as a facility comes through Medicare and Medicaid.
Yeah, well, if you could look into that, I mean, I guess my question is, is there a source that Medicare or Medicaid would pay specifically just for these items? Or is the, is the comment that Medicaid pays for a patient for a given month? And I, you know, I understand that that is, that is where the revenue of Fair Acres comes from, but maybe I'm not as familiar with the fact that Medicaid may also provide for the payment of dry sprinkler components or vital sign machines.
No, there's not a separate component for it.
So, so this is a general revenue, in other words, this is a, this is an expense or a, at this size, I guess, a capital item charged against, charged against the, the general revenues?
Correct.
Okay. But it, but it sounds like it's, it was part of the budget, that it was part of the budget that was submitted to council, to, to the county for, and included as part of the approved budget then?
Yes, due, due to the limited warranty.
Any other questions or comments on agenda item number 10? All right, thank you, Ms. Kaminsky. Agenda item number 11 calls for the approval to advertise for a request for proposals for completion of a long-range plan for library services. And we have Ms. Annie Lappel here to present this. Good morning, ma'am.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of council. I apologize in advance. I'm working from home with my one-year-old. We have work being done in the library services building, so we're all at home. I am respectfully seeking the approval to advertise for a request for proposals for the completion of a long-range plan for library services. Pennsylvania Standards for District Library Centers, of which Delaware County is one, requires that each district center have a five-year plan for the development and provision of district services and resources developed with the input from local libraries and trustees. Delaware County Library's previous plan expired last year. Back in 2005, we last worked with a consultant to create a strategic plan. And since then, all of our subsequent plans have been done in-house. And because we are facing such a challenging time, we thought that this would be an important time to bring in an outside consultant to help us with developing our vision and next steps. And funding for this project was budgeted as a capital improvement for the year.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council?
So, hi, Annie, how are you?
Hi, good, thank you.
It looks like this is somewhat of a requirement to do every five years. Has historically been one done every five years?
Yes, and, but we've been updating it in-house for the past 15 years. So we, we thought this was the time to, to seek some outside assistance.
Okay, great. Makes sense.
You know, one thing that I'd be interested in hearing about more tomorrow night at the public meeting, and not at great length, given the length of our agenda, but just the extent to which your preliminary conversations anticipate long, that's great, I love that, anticipate long-term changes in how the libraries provide services. Because obviously, that will dictate a lot of things, including, you know, what kinds of things we're funding, capital improvements. Are we going for size? Are we going for online infrastructure? You know, how, so I'd be very curious in noting to what extent you're, you're anticipating addressing those kinds of questions in this process.
Okay, absolutely.
Any other questions or comments from council? All right, thank you, ma'am.
All right, thank you. See you tomorrow.
Moving on to agenda item number 12. This calls for the approval of agreements, contracts, and amendments with the human services providers of services. And we have Ms. Garrison to present this. Good morning, ma'am.
Good morning. The first request I have is to increase our current contract with Prospect Crozier in the amount of $6,000. And this is for the CHACE program, which is Children Holding a Safe Environment. It's for children who have an immediate family, family member from the home that has experienced substance use disorder, and it's a support group for those children, excuse me. My second request is to increase our current contract with Child and Family Focus. It's a minimal increase of $500, and this allows to, allow them to purchase tablets for their Strong African American Families program. And right now, they're having a little bit of an issue with the barrier of individuals participating in the program because they don't have the computer equipment to participate. And some type of thing's being done virtually because of COVID. It's creating issues, so this would allow them to reach individuals they're not otherwise reaching. If I may go slightly out of order, I would ask permission to accept the reinvestment monies from the state. This is through our Health Choices Program, and the amount of $3,477,800, it used to be $901. This is for separate reinvestment plans. The first is for the Transitional Age Step Down Program. This is for children that are aging out or coming out of residential treatment and can't go with the community, still need that 24-hour supervision and support. And us will assist them with independent living skills. The next plan, reinvestment plan, including those funds, is for homeless outreach. It's for outreach for the street homeless in the county to hopefully get them in the shelter, but if not, at least engage in some case management or something so eventually they will be willing to go into some type of shelter. The next is for supportive, supportive housing for the social terminates of health reinvestment plan. This is for individuals that are either coming out of prison, coming out of civil commitments, or experience homelessness, or have dual diagnosis with mental health and drug and alcohol, intellectual disabilities, and so forth. Assist those individuals in obtaining housing and maintaining that housing. And the final plan included in the reinvestment plans was for our Finally Home Program. And this is our housing program for individuals that are suffering from opioid use disorder. The next two contracts are linked to these plans. The first is to enter into an agreement with Horizon House for $948,189. And this is for 22 bridge housing and, or leasing, and 2016 master leasing. It's either to support the individuals in the current lease for the payments or, or paid to the landlord, or in some cases, which is a master leasing where the provider actually holds the lease because the individuals themselves cannot apply for the lease or not be granted the lease by a landlord. And the second is to enter into a contract with Caroling for $366,333. And this is, again, for housing support. It's for four bridge leasing and three master leasing programs. And finally, I would ask permission to enter into an agreement with the four listed oil and resource center professions.
Thank you, Ms. Garrison. Any questions or comments from council?
Can I just clarify the housing support that's outlined here? That's really, those are sort of our baseline services that we always have offered. They're not related to Augmented CARES Act or other. This is, this is what, in a normal, non-COVID year, we would be offering, right?
Yes, this is all stuff Human Services in the county has done historically.
Okay, and then the separate program that's coming through the pike is sort of augmented on top of that, giving housing relief above and beyond what we normally do?
Right, and that's, obviously, as you know, is a rental relief program. And that we are looking, and we have, have a meeting with the solicitor and information technology, as well as people in Human Services. And we've met with, I think we have it narrowed down to Mr. Martin or Mr. Lichtenstein, want to jump in? I think we have it narrowed down to two providers we're considering to do the, assisting us with running the program, as well as doing the technology behind it to make sure we're getting payments out and so forth. And hopefully, I see Mr. Martin, I think, has a comment too. But hopefully, we will get that decision or our recommendation at least by, within a week.
Oh, great. Mr. Martin, did you have something?
Just, as indicated, the working team on that is pursuing proposals. We expect to be making a tentative recommendation, well, a recommendation to this group at its meeting in two weeks. In the interim, we will figure out who we want to, select the provider, confirm the proposed cost, lay out the budget, and have that information to present to council at its meeting in early March. And again, there's the two components. There's the federal component of approximately $16.8 million. And there's an additional state component that John Lichtenstein, and I think Ms. Garrison participated in a call on Friday. The state is not quite as far along in having their regulations set up and confirmed. But I think that is in the ballpark of an additional $20 million.
That's correct.
And is, has there been any discussion or rumors of the current moratorium being extended from March 31st?
Not that I've heard.
I have just two quick comments. One is to pile on just a little bit with the housing. That is, I know that the money that's coming down the pike is for rental assistance. I would suggest we keep the team, keep the band together because if the proposed changes coming from, that we're hearing about from Washington come into effect, it may be that there will be an opportunity to use funds in a subsequent round of state and local assistance to assist homeowners who are struggling with mortgage payments as a result of COVID and, and tax payments and other things. So you might want to just keep the band, keep the band together. But the last thing I did want to ask, because it has been a constant concern of mine, and you mentioned the fact that families are not able to participate in some of these programs without the necessary computer equipment, and you're looking at getting the tablets. I would be very interested in any data you collect that suggests that families, even with the tablets, are having difficulty participating because they cannot get the necessary broadband connection, which is, whether it's through a cellular network or hotspots or whatever. I think that continues to be an area of concern for me. It crosses more than this, and this might be another place to collect some data from families that, you know, we may not, we may not have information about them yet if they're not in the school system.
Any other questions or comments from council? All right, thank you, Ms. Garrison.
Thank you.
Moving on to agenda item number 13. This calls for the approval of an agreement between the county and Trains, Towers, Inc. for engineering installation and alignment services at four radio towers as part of the county's 400 megahertz radio improvement project. And we have Mr. Boyce here to present this. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Back in the fall, Delaware County still approved a $3.4 million improvement project to our current radio system. That system was designed to provide modern, state-of-the-art radios to all of our law enforcement, fire, and EMS partners, and improve transmitters in the bands that are outside of the traditional ducting that we've been suffering from. This project is the continuation where we're seeking council support to put transmitters and receivers for the new bands that we have secured up across the county. As part of that, we reached out to, there's only a few technical providers to climb radio towers and install this equipment. We reached out to our traditional partners and also our counties that surround us, contacted three different firms, Henkels and McCoy's, Penn Tech, and Train Towers out of Haddon Heights. Train Towers is the only one that officially were able to bid on the work and provide the service within three months. Their prices are consistent. Climbing towers is a very difficult position, just as a point of reference. If we change a light bulb at the top of one of our towers, it's around $5,000. They're going to install these at four different sites across the county, three of our main tower sites, the prison location in Cheney, the Lima Towers here at the 911 Center, and the Upper Arby. And also, we're in agreement underway with Aqua of America to provide a separate tower in the area of Media Borough. The work will be completed. We have worked with Train in the past, and the request is for $115,823 to install the four tower site locations. tower site locations.
Thank you, Mr. Boyce. Any questions or comments from council?
I just have a curiosity of whether these towers um are likely to be integrated into the, the bigger project um and potential sites that would serve um when we are moving on to making, um you know, finding new sites. I think we were looking for twenty-one at one point.
Yeah, Schaefer, uh actually, part of this work, we're going to be starting to clean our towers. Uh Train is going to, when they're up there, take down some of the legacy equipment. Uh the weight on towers is, is the limiting factor whenever we do projects. So that'll be a little bit of cleanup. But as we move to this system, uh again, without being overly technical, the five hundred band that we current operate is just daily interfered with the television stations that have gone uh up. The digital television, it's, it's louder some days than our portables and it gets into the system. This four seventy range that we'll be operating on is outside of there. We do intend to make this a component of our long-term strategy for the radio system. So uh yes, the, the short answer is this equipment will still remain on the towers, be used along with the portable radios that are in our officer's hands right now. So uh we hope to bring this over onto our new system, ultimately reducing some of the cost when we move to an eight hundred uh version.
So there will be additional equipment installed, assuming the weight requirements are not exceeded, when we move to the eight hundred?
Yes, we move the eight hundred, uh both of those systems are current five hundred, this four hundred system and the eight hundred. Uh there's a burn-in period, so they'll all be hanging on the towers. That's something we're working around. Uh the major towers that the county owns should be able to do that or be reinforced. And then as we go into other towers, whether we build them or partner with uh locations around the county, we'll be putting uh these up there based on weight requirements. But we don't own the majority of the towers. We're lease partners. Uh and so it's a combination of where those towers are most effective for us and then where we can lease them and get space.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any other um questions or comments from Mr. Boyce? All right, moving on to agenda item number fourteen, this calls for the approval of an agreement between EBA Engineering and the County of Delaware to address nine one one location errors and improve address accuracy. And we have uh Mr. Boyce here to present this one as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh just recently, I believe last month, council accepted a grant from Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for four hundred and seventy-three thou- thousand dollars. It's called the statewide interconnectivity grant. That grant will allow Delaware County to be one of the first uh public safety answering points to join the new statewide uh mapping and answering system. Nine one one calls go from your provider to a vendor that we currently contract with, that that vendor then decides where in the United States the call needs to return to when it comes to us. Commonwealth is going to be taking on that project, so they'll be accepting the calls and then rerouting them back to us. The need for us to make sure that our computer aided dispatch system and this project, our maps are consistent with those locations coming back. Uh so this grant that we're talking about, the next three items are all means for Delaware County to get our data set, our maps, our planning in conjunction with planning so that we could then transfer this project to the Commonwealth. Uh just on some raw numbers, the County of Delaware pays around three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year for this uh system that we use. The Commonwealth will be picking that up. So the sooner we can move to that platform, we'll save money long-term and be truly a, a stronger regional project. Always costs associated with any project and I will discuss those long-term. Uh the first one of these is for EBA Engineering. Uh both of these firms that I'm going to recommend, Esri and EBA, are recommended by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to be able to perform the services, vetted by them and offered, everything is at the state pricing to do this. The first contract with EBA Engineering is for address and error locations. What they will do is they'll scrub the, you know, hundreds of thousands of addresses we currently have in our CADs and make sure they're correct in the new formatting. Uh again, the traditional way, the really old-school way of mapping that we've used for years is if you take any block location, uh be it a short block or a long block, the current way we identify the address is one is the first address and the highest number is one hundred. So it, it really gets a range of values, works well on a residential neighborhood, but does not work well in a modern where people will expect us to do that. So the first contract with Esri will be to perform these services to convert our error data, our error data, data that is not consistent with uh the new standards over. And the cost for Esri to perform these services by the end of the year is one hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from Mr. Boyce on agenda item number fourteen? All right then, moving on to agenda item number fifteen, this calls for the approval of an agreement between EBA Engineering, it sounds familiar, and County of Delaware, and I'll again look to Mr. Boyce for this one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, this is funded of the grant that I spoke of. The, the difference between this project is this is going to get all of our uh current data, not the ones that are error up into a format. The, the Commonwealth provided for us such a large amount of data sets to contract with uh EBA to perform this work over the course of the year. This is uh again, a lot of data to be converted and at the end of the year, hopefully uh we will have the majority of our data up to play. So the one hundred and ninety, one hundred and nineteen thousand is separate. If I could at this time, just divert a little bit, the grant is for four hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. The issues I'm preventing, presenting here today come to about four hundred thousand. Uh I will be approaching the salary board in conjunction with the planning department about uh not contracting that last seventy thousand dollars and bringing on a GIS planner uh to the county services. Uh once we get through these grants, we'll still need to perform those services. And again, with Director Hill's guidance as well, we believe that bringing in a GIS planner during our calendar year here, well, will get them up to speed uh with the new systems, the new software, and then have a lot more added value when we move into twenty twenty-two. I can believe that already, but uh by hiring that person. So the balance will be coming for consideration of a new planner. But for this, there again, it's one hundred and nineteen thousand for the second component of converting our data to the new uh next-gen nine one one platform.
You know, I've, I have a question that's probably better directed to Mr. Lazarus than to Mr. Boyce, but um you know, one thing that I've certainly seen through the elections and through the work that's being done with our uh vaccine rollout, um and obviously all the work that was done, the testing and everything else, is uh the county's mapping services are really becoming, you know, much more part of the critical infrastructure that we all see. Uh and what's also, I think, not particularly helpful because it is a very specialized field and while it can be used for lots of different purposes, the technology to do it right is expensive and the skill set that's needed to do it right is, is reasonably high. So one of my questions is, are we looking at trying to build a county-wide mapping system? Because I know there are some places in the county like reassessment where um I don't know that, it, it, I, I think we could do a whole lot more with mapping than we're doing in the assessor's office if we had the skill level and the expertise that's elsewhere, um because it's an under-resourced department. So one of my questions would be, if we're going to look at moving resources to create a mapping position uh for this process, can it be part of a discussion about county-wide mapping resources?
Uh council member, I think it should be. And I think over the, as we start to look at um a host of things under the administrative code and realignments in next year's budget, better positioning our, our mapping resources along the lines you've talked about makes a lot of sense. So I agree.
Ms. Ruth, if I could add to that, I mean, that's exactly where we're hoping to go. The work in this, my chief technology person here, Joe Brennan, and Linda Hill and Julie Demuto over in planning have been working on this diligently. We see this position as that true resource for many departments in the county. Uh there's still, uh it looks like it best fits here in emergency services and our mapping, but we're really trying to develop an intelligence-based system for planning, for taxes, for, for everyone that uh when we produce the traditional heat maps and information you expect to make informed decisions. This person uh will really be part of that. It is going to be a lot more than just addressing for locations, but really trying to draw intelligence out of this information. So uh I fully support that. And when, when I do approach the salary board uh for this position, I, I expect to bring in planning to kind of explain a little bit more uh the values of bringing this kind of uh talent to the county.
Um if I could, I think, I think we need to be careful about predetermining where these positions reside. I think um you can make the strong argument that everything we do is geographically based and we ought to have a strong um mapping organization that doesn't particularly serve one organization but serves everyone. So I think it's a good conversation to have. Um and I could even see it at some point, you know, I would say it either belongs in assessing or maybe it's a separate entity, but we need to look at that.
And I just want to point out that that, that it, it already is happening, that we have really significant cross, cross-pollination of our mapping services.
Mm-hmm.
Um because planning and Julia Demuto has done an amazing job mapping for Visit Delco, for the Commerce Center, in the Delco Strong programming, for um our inter-community health with the um testing sites and food bank sites. I mean, that is already happening and, and to the extent that we're, it sounds like we're investing in more of that to be spread with, within nine one one and perhaps beyond is um, I mean, it's been incredibly useful to our residents already.
Yeah, I mean, it's been, it was an enormous help with the election rollouts. Um and especially with all the changes that were necessitated by the pandemic. And I think there is a real enthusiasm on the election staff with the uh cooperation of Ms. Delmuto to really make that mapping part of every election because it's, you know, it's, she gets the files, it's fairly easy to set up and it is just, you know, something that is of, of tremendous utility to people trying to access uh voting resources. So I just feel like this, uh I, I, I really, I have absolute, I absolutely support getting the resource. I support bringing it in-house. Um I think it needs to have a direct role with emergency services. My question is though, can we do more with less by centralizing a lot of these services? And I think, given um the intensified need that we've seen this year, it's a conversation we need to have sooner than, rather than later. And I don't know that there's any magic under the administrative code or anything else about where this resides. Uh I think that the, the service needs to be there and, you know, certainly the resources in whatever mapping function we have, there are going to have to be people who are uh, you know, have a direct line into whatever departments they're supporting, whether, regardless of where they reside. So, you know, I mean, one could make an argument that this is almost an administrative service, you know, it's, it's like telecom or IT. But I, I just think that since it's going to be coming before the salary board, um you know, absolutely fully expressing support for it, I think we should be looking to um have that larger discussion and not be creating duplicative infrastructure that is going to take money away from other places where it could be useful.
Um and I would add one thought is that given our recent experience, we have a database that's accessible to multiple users, we need to be very aware of information security concerns. So um that's something to throw into the mix as well.
Thanks. Anything further on agenda item number fifteen? All right, here now we'll move on to agenda item number sixteen, which calls for the approval of an agreement between Environmental Systems Research Institute, Inc. and County of Delaware. And we have Mr. Boyce here for this last ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the, really the last part of the, of this project as we go forward. Uh Esri really is the state-of-the-art GIS mapping platform we use across the county. We have multiple licensing and again, truly a partnership with planning is where we're at now, moving forward. Uh we are required to have specific, different licensing for the computer-aided dispatch system. The computer-aided dispatch system stands alone in its ability, has to be protected at all times, has a higher level of security. And these additional licenses covered by the grant as we get up to speed for this year uh are required for our obligation under the Commonwealth to make sure that we have full-time, twenty-four-seven, super redundant access to the software. So the grant will cover our performance period for this year as we get all these ducks in a row for ninety-three thousand dollars. After that, the second year cost, which we would expect to incur to move forward, is around twenty-five thousand dollars a year. So uh by agreeing to these licensing, we have the platform to move those other projects forward this year. And then our reoccurring cost would be around twenty-five thousand dollars a year to the County of Delaware.
Thank you, Mr. Boyce. Any questions from coun- from council? All right. Thank you, Mr. Boyce.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Moving on to agenda item number seventeen, this calls for the approval to grant, approval of a grant to Darby Township in the amount of twenty-three thousand dollars for the demolition of a vacant residence. Um and for seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen, I know we were going to have uh Ms. Hill uh present for this, but uh perhaps Ms. Locke or Ms. Lazarus could take this on.
I'm, I'm pleased to uh to speak on this. Uh good morning, council. Uh this is a request for approval to provide grant funds to Darby and Chester Townships for the demolition of one vacant lot and seven vacant properties as a part of the Delaware County demolition program. The funds are available for the demolition of blighted properties with recorder of deeds from fees collected on each deed and mortgage recorded. There are no general funds involved with this. Any questions?
Thanks. Yeah, I mean, this is fairly well trodden ground. Um you know, but uh anything from council on this?
A quick update on what the uh, the balance is in that account?
Uh seven hundred and sixty-three thou- seven sixty-three, eight oh four.
And that's before these three uh items?
I'm not sure, actually. I can check that. I'll make sure that's answered for tomorrow. Yes?
Great. Thank you.
Uh I just wanted to share something. I had uh some outreach from um a, a company that specializes in doing um what they, conservatorships under Act thirty-five. And I don't know to what extent uh the county has done any work to try to look at where that could be useful or to push out information to municipalities that uh find themselves seeking demolition funds. But it is an alternative in areas where there is structural integrity, but other problems with the property. Uh and it's, it is being used in various municipalities in Delaware County. And I guess my big question is, it, it seems to be used where solicitors are aware of Act thirty-five and not being used where they're not. And so I would just ask, uh this is just more to bring it to your attention and it, it, it kind of, it, it just came to my attention last week and then this stuff came up on the agenda. But it, it might be something that we want to look at and potentially uh as we push out information about the demolition fund, push out in, information about utilizing Act thirty-five where it may be possible to maintain the structures.
I'll bring that to the director of planning's attention, Ms. Linda Hill, and we'll discuss that. Thank you.
Thanks. I'm happy to forward the information I have. I'll do that offline.
That would be great.
There's nothing further. We'll move on to agenda item number eighteen, which calls for the approval of a grant to the City of Chester in the amount of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the demolition and clearance of five vacant structures. And we have Ms. Locke here. Uh at least we had her. Uh I presume this is a, a bit of the same?
It is. Seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen are a grouped uh item.
All right. Anything uh in particular about eighteen that we should know about?
No.
Okay.
You know, I, I'm sorry. I could have asked this any number of times over the years that we've had these items come up, but it just uh occurs to me now. Um when we issue the grant, is the actual demolition and who does that, is that something that the receiving municipality decides? Um how, how does that sort of work? I mean, does the county have any involvement on, on who uh actually receives the contract to do the demolition?
I'm not sure how it works exactly, but I will definitely find out and, and share that information with you.
Okay. Thank you.
I, I, I think what happens is they get bids ahead of time before they come to us. And that's what, that's where they get these numbers from. And, and then there's also then a lien placed upon the property to reimburse from any subsequent sale, which that money should come back to the county once that's done. Great. All right. Agenda item number 19 calls for the approval of a grant to the City of Chester in the amount of $70,000 for the demolition of two vacant properties, two different spots. And I assume unless there's anything particular about this, uh, that we're, we're going down the same path.
Agreed.
Okay. Anything further from council on 17, 18, or 19? All right. Thank you, Ms. Locke. Uh, agenda item number 20 calls for the approval of some liquid fuels tax refund allocations. And we have Mr. Beurling here to present this. Good morning, sir.
Morning, sir. Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of council. I'm here today to ask for the approval of the 2021 Liquid Fuels Tax Refund allocations to municipalities in the amount of $673,439. Pending receipt of applications, PENDOT approval of projects eligibility subject to the solicitor's approval. Municipal Liquid Fuels Program, municipalities must make, must make sure that the liquid fuels they receive are used only in allowable expenses. Publication 9, Chapter 2 provides examples of acceptable expenditure expenditures for the liquid fuels funds. Municipality Liquid Fuels Program has a range of projects to support construction, reconstruction, maintenance, repair of public roads or streets. Funds are only available to municipalities who sit, submit an annual report.
I believe Mr. Beurling is frozen. Is anybody else hearing him?
Internet keeps going out in, in the building here. So I put mine on my, my hotspot, but I think everybody who's in the building just went out.
It looks like Mr. Beurling is in some deep thought right now.
I see everybody dropping off now.
Should we jump forward until Mr. Beurling?
Yeah, I'm trying to find one that somebody would actually be on the phone. We have, uh, why don't we go to agenda item number 25? Until folks can jump back on, this calls for the approval of a grant to the Economic Development Oversight Board. And we have Laura Goodrich here to present agenda item number 25.
Mr. Um, Mr. Zidic, I would just note that we, um, while we have Mr. Lichtenstein, we do not have the county clerk. So I, you know, John, are you able to step in and, and take notes for Ms. Coogan?
I'll do my, I'll do my best.
Yeah, I don't, we don't actually take minutes for the agenda.
We do take notes on changes to the agenda or?
Yeah, correct, correct. Yeah. If there, if there's anything that comes up that's a, an, and needs to look after, I will let her know.
Ms. Goodrich, take it away.
Great. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of council. Today we are requesting the administrative funding to support the delivery of economic development in Delaware County. The grant agreement calls for disbursement in four quarters to cover personnel and operating costs that the county historically has provided to the EDOB. Typically, we talk about these successes of EDOB in the Commerce Center in the last year. This past year, those successes are assisting in to stabilize over 1,500 businesses and nonprofits in Delaware County with north of $16 million and is due to the support of Delaware County Council and also the Delaware County Redevelopment Authority. We have a new state funded program on the horizon. I believe that's agenda item number 26. And we need to still start talking about recovery. Regionally, uh, the EDCs are actually talking about doing a quick study, taking a look at some of the things that we have spoken about before, Mr. Chairman, including which of these industries are most likely to start employing people faster coming, as we're coming out of this recession. So we're looking to hopefully participate in that survey as well as also support our administrative costs over the next year. We need to also build some technical staff and increase the technology that we have in this office as well. We've noticed some big gaps in our technology as you have as well.
Thank you.
We upgraded our wifi last year. That was a necessity.
Okay. Any questions or comments from council?
Well, I won't go on because this is such a long agenda, but I, I want to say that this investment that the county has made historically of slightly over $600,000 is, um, a really good deal for the amount of work that comes out of the Commerce Center. It's funded by the, by gaming revenue typically. And, uh, that revenue this year has been very challenged, as we all know. I think it's at about half of what we usually, for 2020, it was about half of what we usually receive. But, um, this money will go towards keeping the economic development efforts that are currently underway and, um, a pretty comprehensive strategic planning process is about to take off with the Commerce Center and the authorities that are all under the umbrella of the Commerce Center to really think through how this arm of our efforts is going to look going forward, given the changes in our economy because of the pandemic and given the changes of the priorities of this council in how we want to invest and encourage our businesses. So, um, I, I could not be more supportive of approving this contract and this, this funding for the Commerce Center, who has proved again and again, um, that it's an investment that's well worth it.
Thank you, Ms. Sheefer. Anything else from council on agenda item number 25? All right, hearing nothing, we'll move on to agenda item number 26. I see some people coming on by telephones. We're gonna, going through those whose names I can clearly identify, who I think are doing a presentation. And Laura Goodrich is here, so we will do number 26, which calls for the approval of the Hospitality Industry Recovery Program through the Economic Development Oversight Board under Pennsylvania Act 1 of 2021. And I will let, uh, Ms. Goodrich speak to this with greater detail.
Yes, I believe today or tomorrow, what we will do is ask you to affirm your administrator for the state CHIRP program, CB19 Hospitality Industry Relief Program. EDOB is the CITO, a certified economic development organization with the state of Pennsylvania. And we are in good standing on that, on their, on their programs. The CHIRP program will provide funding of up to $50,000 specifically for the industries that are in the 722 and 721 NACs Code. That is the accommodation and food and drink services. Unlike the rapid response program that we did in December, this will also include limited service. The only provisions that we know of are no publicly traded firms, cannot exceed $10 million in tangible net worth and must employ 300 or less within that entity. So it's shaping up to be a pretty good program. We're still all sort of digesting, all of the Citos are sort of digesting the legislation from Senate Bill 109, Act 1 of 2021. But we do have some of those basic provisions. And I do believe that the calculation for Delaware County is just north of 6.4 million, uh, 6,419, 419,183 dollars.
All right. So thank you for that. So my understanding is we have the $6.4 million and we can give out $50,000, up to $50,000 to restaurants, to hotels, um, to bars as well? Anybody else I'm missing?
Cafes.
Cafes. Okay.
Limited service, limited, uh, drink service, what are considered limited drink service entities, uh, limited service entities, where it's, uh, more of counter, you're served at the counter as opposed to sitting down, which we had discussion about between them and the full-service dining. It will include limited service as well. And it'll be done by entity.
Okay. I know we, we've gone through this previously with, with some of the CARES Act money we presented. How many folks, uh, that we, how many, how many such businesses have we given money to previously on this?
Hotels, not as many. We've only probably done a half a dozen hotels to date through the Delco Strong programs. In terms of the restaurants and limited service, we're probably about 350 to 400. They're a sizable amount of the 1,500.
Okay.
And I'd like to point out that, um, in terms of the restaurant, and, uh, that, that industry that we, we did cover in Delco Strong 4, we did, we only covered our program, the county program, only covered those that were closed by the governor's order in December or February, or yeah, was it December?
It was.
And, um, so there were a fair amount of establishments, like pizza places and walk-in cafes that were not covered by Delco Strong 4. And they will be covered, as I understand it, through this program. I did note that there was a preference order in some of the language that came out and, and that businesses that were closed in the government, by the governor's order, would be preferred. So, um, that's something we have to kind of think through how we would handle.
Certainly, there's three priorities according to legislation. First off is, uh, demonstrating 50% loss of revenue from 2019 to 2020 from second and third and fourth quarters collectively. The second one is not having received any kind of CB19 relief program to date, be it federal, state, or local. Uh, and the third is that we're closed, especially for that mitigation order that was in effect as of mid-March in last year. Those are priorities. They're not necessarily end-all be-alls. The, the requirement is for demand, being able to demonstrate a minimum of a 25% loss, basically quarter to quarter from 2019 to 2020. And an entity has to have been operating by February 15th of 2020 in order to be able to be eligible.
I'm sorry.
Councilor Sheefer, one other, one other note on when they, I, I believe that under the legislation, when they refer to closure under the governor's emergency order, they're looking all the way back to starting in last March, not just the most recent one.
Which pretty much covered everyone. So.
Not hotels. They did not have to shut, they, yeah, they were still open.
And then one other comment I wanted to make is that, um, in my opinion, it is, um, using our CITO and our EDOB is the, is the way to go in administering this. We have seen now over the last 10 months that this entity is absolutely capable of doing this efficiently, fairly, equitably. They've pushed out $16 million through grant programs and done it just beautifully. So I have complete confidence in having our chosen administrator of this program being the EDOB, which is our CITO.
Yeah, I appreciate that. You know, if we do the math though, um, we're not going to be able to give out $50,000 to everybody who might qualify, uh, obviously. So do, do you have a sense as to how you might recommend determining how much to give to each? Are you, is the, do, do, have you sort of settled on parameters in that regard?
We have not. Mr. Chairman Zidic, we're actually working with Chester County. They ended up using the same IT provider for web portal applications in their last round. Um, and just because of the nature of being so close, we're sort of taking a look, not only, it's sort of a holistic approach southeast, in southeastern Pennsylvania, to trying to match programs as much as possible along with delivery dates. There might be some discrepancy between when Monco launches versus Delaware County. But we're trying to align program with Chester County in particular, just to be able to sort of not only contain costs, but also reduce confusion among business owners between those two counties. So we, we're sort of in discussions about what those, uh, limit, it would, it would be based on revenue from probably from the 19 tax return, what most is recently available in terms of what the level of grant to be received will be. But we're, we're probably going to structure similarly to the same way we did during rapid response.
Thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Goodrich on agenda item number 26? All right. Well, I see we have most of our gang back on the phone. I gather the internet is a little squirrely in the, in the county offices today. Mr. Beurling, why don't we, um, pick back up agenda item number 20 then, if you, if you will?
Uh, Mr. Chairman. I don't know where I got to, but I'll start over again from the beginning. I'm here today to ask for the approval of the 2021 Liquid Fuels Tax Refund allocations to municipalities in the amount of $673,439. Pending the receipt of applications and PENDOT approval of project eligibility subject to the solicitor's approval. Municipal Liquid Fuels Program, municipalities must make sure that the liquid fuel funds they receive are used in allowable expenses. Publication 9, Chapter 2 provides examples of acceptable expenditures for liquid fuels funds. They have to submit an annual report. It's an MS 339. Actually use report MS 339P, project miscellaneous receipts and records, a record of checks, and make its deposits and payments and expenditures in compliance with Section 2.6, appropriate use of funds. Fair to do so may result in not receiving allocations from PENDOT until all discrepancies are resolved. Municipal's, municipalities' allocation is based on a population, miles of roads, unapproved liquid fuels inventory. To be placed on a system, a road must have a minimum of 33 foot right of way in a township, 16 foot in a borough. The cartway drivable surface must be minimum of 16 feet wide and the road must be a minimum of 250 feet in length. If the road is a dead end, must have a cul-de-sac turnaround at the end with a minimum of 40 foot radius. To continue to receive liquid fuels from the road must be maintained in such a condition that it can be driven safely at a 15 mile per hour. We'll be sending out letters to every municipality in the county once we receive the council approval. Just to recap of the year 2020, we did send out letters on 2/7 of 2020. We followed up with an email on 2/11 of 20, older municipality, two older municipalities in the county. We did get some, but we sent out a second notice to, to others on 7/8 of 2020. And for 2020, we only had three municipalities that not actually filed for liquid fuels funds. We followed up with them on a, in 9/20 of 20 and an email and a phone call. Thank you, sir.
Jack, I'm sorry. Just say that again. So we only had three that didn't apply this year for liquid fuels?
That's correct, sir.
That's tremendous because I, my recollection is that we're going from two years ago or a year ago where it was, I don't know, at least a third, maybe a half of municipalities weren't even asking for money that was on the table for them.
Well, we, we did a lot of work. I believe we took the advice of council. We, we went on there. We explained what they could do with the monies. We explained that they didn't have to take the money this year. We had a number of them that doubled up. So they, they sent us a letter, which we're allowed to do, and said, we, we don't want to take our expenditure for this year. We'd rather roll two years together. And for some municipalities that are only getting a small amount, it, it makes sense to them. So instead of, I think the lowest amount we give out is around $702. So they can take that $1,400, they can stretch it a little bit further than they could the seven. So it kind of makes sense and we were happy with the results that we got.
Well, I just want to applaud the efforts because this has been a great source of frustration on my part, um, seeing the amount of money that our municipalities were leaving on the table over the years, you know, truly in the, in the order of millions over the course of, of, you know, a, a few years.
Sure.
And, um, you know, I, I think that it, it can be one of those elements of county government that get put aside. Uh, and I think candidly, the county has not done all it could in the past to ensure that, you know, in this highly fragmented county we live in, where there are 49 separate municipalities, that they're aware of all of the resources that are available to them. And liquid fuels was always sort of, um, you know, evidence number one of where we could do a better job of making sure they were aware of the ways in which they could take advantage of that funding. So I, I really applaud the efforts of your office and the planning department's office and everyone else who, you know, is, is, you know, doing their best to sort of educate our municipal leaders. Because like I said, I think this is an area where county government, you know, it's not front and center, but it's something that we, we can be doing much better job of, of, you know, uh, being that leading governing body within the county. So thank you.
I'd, I'd also just like to mention, there is a lady in, in PENDOT, Marjorie Paris, who is, is excellent, helps us out all the time. And actually said to me, Jack, have the municipalities reach out to me and I'll help them out as much as I can. So she's been a tremendous help to us too.
Great. And let those, let's get to 100%, those last three that are, let's make sure they're aware, like you guys are leaving money on the table. You can roll it over to multiple years.
Sure.
Problem. You've got a range of things you can use it for. Buy rock salt, clearly. Clearly, in a year like this, we know that you can always have more rock salt.
Exactly. Exactly.
All right, thank you, Mr. Beerling. If there's nothing further, we'll move on to agenda item number 21, which deals with a bridge guide rail project, and Mr. Beerling is here to present this as well.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, Members of council. I'm here today to ask for the approval of a deduct change order for contract E060620, County Bridge Guide Rail Project to various bridges to reduce the original sum from $120,830 by $1,962.50 to a new amount of $118,867.50. And this is because we actually bundled the bridges. I think that we got, you know, such a good price. So I appreciate all the help that I received from the people that work in this office, and that's why we got the thing done a little bit cheaper.
Any questions or comments from council? Moving swiftly on to agenda item number 22, this has to do with the bridge inspection agreement with McCormick-Taylor, and Mr. Beerling, you're up again.
Thank you. Morning, Mr. Chairman, Members of council. I'm here today to ask for the approval to extend the current NBIS bridge inspection agreement, excuse me, with McCormick-Taylor, 1818 Market, Philadelphia, PA, 19103, for a period of three years through 3/23 of 2024. I brought this before council last meeting, but there was some information that I didn't describe in a correct manner. This is actually an agreement between McCormick-Taylor and accounting. It is in PENDOT's ECMS system. So PENDOT and the, we put it in the EMS system. PENDOT has to concur with us. They don't have to accept our choice, but they did concur with us and approve the original contract. This contract is set to expire on March 23rd of 2021. PENDOT does not have a problem with extending the contract, and it will use whatever date the county wants to extend it to, but likely they will only extend it one time. The money in this contract is still encumbered for the length of the contract with PENDOT, and if we don't extend the contract, the unspent balance will be diverted to the general fund, and we will have to start the whole process over again. This process is lengthy and will require the county to temporarily extend the contract to stay in compliance with the federal inspection guidelines. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council?
So how, how long is the extension that's being proposed?
The extension with PENDOT, they said we can extend it for whatever we want. There's enough money in there. They feel that we could extend that four or three years. So this would be a three-year extension. They've actually encumbered the money. We don't actually have the money already, but it's money we use to pay for the service when we use it. So they have it encumbered. If we don't use up the money that is encumbered for us, people just could put back into general funds, is what I'm being told.
Into?
In PENDOT's general funds.
PENDOT's general?
Yes, yes. Yes, they're a partner in this. This is on, like I said, the website for PENDOT when it was bid out, so it is on ECMS.
So we'd understand that in the absence of us extending with McCormick-Taylor, if we wanted to hire a different person, for instance, that would cause us to effectively lose these encumbered funds. We'd have to go back to?
Square one.
And how difficult is it to move from square one?
Well, it's an involved process, because we actually use a matrix when we hire a firm to do something like this, so.
Yeah, I remember going through that.
Yeah, yeah, we have a matrix that we use, that we come up with, with the firm, and then we put that on ECMS. And then if PENDOT agrees that it's a firm that has the experience in their eyes and is a PENDOT partner, then they approve it. But PENDOT can also say, "Well, I think you'd better find somebody with a little bit more, you know, experience in this field."
Right, but that just means we have to go through the work of hiring somebody new, as we've done before.
Sure.
It doesn't put the monies at risk, which is sort of what I was hearing, that these monies would be at risk. You know, obviously, if we can't come up with somebody that PENDOT would approve, then we might not get these monies. But in the absence of that unlikely event happening, we would still get the monies back then.
Well, what I'm being told is we would go back, and the money that's in there for this contract would actually get put back into the general fund of the state. From what I understand, it wouldn't stay in there for us. It would go back into there, and we would do a whole new contracts, and we would be allotted, I guess, new money is what I'm being told.
So we could get more?
We could get more. Right now, I believe the original contract was for $812,000. I believe the figure I gave last time was $336,000 that we used. I think there's a total in there of about $470,000 that's left in this contract.
You may have already said this two weeks ago. How long has McCormick-Taylor had this contract?
This, I believe, is from 2016.
Sorry. How long has McCormick-Taylor had some form of contract with Delaware County?
I would go back possibly, but yeah. Yeah, I don't have it. I can get that for tomorrow's meeting. I don't want to guess at it, but I would say it's been substantial. They're one of the premier bridge contractors in the tri-state area, if you will. I know they actually work in six different states.
Understood, and I no doubt that they're premier, but they're not the only premier.
No, I'm not saying that, no.
Yeah, so I think, you know, again, we sort of feel like we're back where we were two weeks ago, at least in my opinion, which is council's expressing, or at least I'm expressing a desire to see that we have some process here to see who else is, you know, does this sort of work, and that we have a, you know, fresh set of eyes look on McCormick-Taylor's capabilities here and how that compares, and what their pricing compares to others, and that we, you know, have a process here to evaluate whether it's the incumbent or not, without any bias one way or the other, where we stand. And I don't hear sort of, to me, a compelling view that because of the policies of PENDOT, we can't still do such a process.
What we would actually have to do is we would actually have to extend this contract sometime, because with this contract and complexity of it, I'm going to say I'd probably need almost a year extension anyway before, you know, we could do something, because it's going to be quite a lengthy process. And I don't know exactly all the steps in doing that, but that's something that I can look at, but it would be a long process to do. From talking with the people at PENDOT that we have a liaison with, this can be a one-time extension. So we can extend it for one year, we could extend it for two years, we could extend it. They feel there's enough money in there to extend that into funds, to extend this for three years.
Yeah. Remind me again, when's the current contract expire?
It's done in March of 2021. I've got the exact date.
Okay. Well, we can extend it for six months. We could extend it for eight months. I mean, any number of, any amount of time. And look, I think this process doesn't require reinventing the wheel. I mean, this county has plenty of experience with how to go through a process of looking at professionals and evaluating on the range of things that we would evaluate them on as to who would be the best provider. So, you know, I understand that it's not something you do overnight, but still, it's a, you know, a well-trodden process.
Well, just, if it was something we were going to extend, I would say that at least a year extension, you know, to give us some breathing room. We have a number of other projects that are going on, so to do it with the people in the office, it's pretty demanding to do it. So a one-year extension, I think, would probably be the smallest amount that I would personally like to see at this time.
That seems like a lot of time. A one-year seems like a lot, and to say at least, I would say it most personally. But what I would ask, and this is only for my own part, maybe others disagree, but between now and tomorrow night, I would suggest that you and the executive director and perhaps Solicitor's office, that there be a brief huddle, and that you come back before us with a specific amount of time you are asking for, for an extension of this contract that's not three years, but is something far short of that, but that gives some degree of cushion to run a process and decide who is the right provider of this service to the county.
That's fine.
Yeah, I would just chime in, and not to extend this too much, to say that I think there's a lot of competing considerations here. One is that we need to make sure that we've got, you know, continued services for the ongoing projects and the projects that need attention, and that we continue to assess and prioritize our bridge work throughout the county, you know, that not get delayed because of a contracting question or who we're contracting with. The second thing that I would say is, and this is a concern, and I just want to echo it, because I, you know, having been inside a large corporation and having worked on the legal side, actually in two very large corporations, most places that engage in regular bidding, which any for-profit entity is going to do, or any regulated utility, like the kind I worked for, they have really robust staffs to manage the bidding and assessment process. And I will say that I think we are making great strides in that area, but we came into a county, you know, certainly when I took office, and I know Mr. Zidick and Mr. Madden can speak to this, you know, when they took office two years earlier, the county has not invested in that kind of expertise, and it does take time away from people who are doing other things to put together these thoughtful requests for proposals that you want to have, where you're really, you know, request for proposal, request for qualifications. And I just feel like extending this, I understand why Mr. Beerling is saying a year. I think a year may be the minimum, but it's doable, but a lot of it depends, too, on what Mr. Lazarus and what Ms. Locke, who I think are going to be overseeing our facilities, can do in terms of bringing in additional resources to do the kinds of evaluations that we need to do. And I'm not, I want to do it. I'm not suggesting we don't do it. I'm simply saying it's, you don't snap your fingers and make it happen without pushing back on other priorities that have to be taken care of.
I understand. I would only make note, however, that our, this council's and Mr. Zidick's and my strong, strong preference for making sure that professional services that hadn't been bid out in a very long time do get bid out, that's, this is nothing new. I mean, we've been expressing this for several years now, and this contract's expiration is in something that was foisted upon us. We should have known that this expiration was coming up. So we are sort of, you know, putting ourselves in a position where it could have been avoided.
Yeah, I guess I'd like to build upon that a little bit. I'm concerned that this was brought to our attention for the first time two weeks ago, when we should have known that this contract was expiring on March 23rd. And if the thought was that we had no ability to actually do an RFP prior to its expiration, we should have been talking about this back in September of last year. And I guess I'd look to Mr. Lazarus and Mr. Beerling to wonder how many more contracts might we see like this over the next six months. I'd appreciate a report tomorrow night outlining if there are any other ones that might be on the agenda like this. My own recollection is that we went through this matrix with McCormick-Taylor previously during my tenure, so sometime in 2018 and 2019. I don't know if it was for bridge inspection, or perhaps it was for just general engineering work. But, you know, I would submit to you, we are not, we're not talking about manned mission to Mars here. We're talking about bridge inspections. And if it were me and I was trying to come up with an RFP, I wouldn't think that I'd start from scratch. I'd call up Chester County, I'd call up Bucks County, I'd call up Montgomery County. I'd say, "Hey, what do you guys use for your, for, when you put this out to bid?", assuming that they've done so sometime in the last 20 years. And I'd start from there. But I can't imagine it would take us more than six months to put together an RFP, get it out there, and for somebody to respond for bridge inspection work, which has to be relatively uniform throughout the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, if not the country.
I would note that the approval of PENDOT is required, and it's been suggested by PENDOT that the extension is available only one time. So we want to make sure we're not in a position where the extension requested is of a duration that it expires before, even presuming the county operates in as equitable a fashion as possible, that we have a gap because of a delay in the approval from PENDOT.
Mr. Martin, is it possible to, and I, you know, to go forward with a longer, like a three-year extension, but with a right to cancel, you know, with certain amount of notice, if we're able to do, you know, get the bidding process done and get PENDOT's approval? I mean, because my concern, you having raised that, and it wasn't a concern until you articulated that, is, you know, we can get through our process in six months, and something can get held up at PENDOT for a while, and then we've got nobody, you know, we've got a gap in our service, so, which could become a problem in terms of funding and other things. So I guess my thought would be, if we have the ability to terminate it in the event we're ready to put forward another contract, then I think having a longer extension is less problematic.
If I could add a couple thoughts. One is, these rates are locked in at a previous year's rate, so if we were to resolicit, we do face the risk of higher unit costs. Is that correct, Jack?
That's correct, sir.
The other aspect?
We could also get lower unit costs, too, right? It wouldn't preclude us from getting lower rates.
Well, I think we wouldn't know that, but with certainty, but they're four years old. The other aspect just that we'll have to also bring to council's attention that Jack brought up is the funding risk. And I think we need to, in the time between today and tomorrow, we'll try and reach out to PENDOT to see what the forecast is for available funds, because if the funds go back to PENDOT to reallocate, we need to make sure that we can give you some measure of certainty that they'll be also available. And then the other thing that I would throw on the table is, some of this work is seasonal, so that having the contract in place for this coming spring and summer fall is probably something that we should consider also in how long that contract is extended for. So I just offer those as considerations that we'll try and address between today and tomorrow.
I get all those considerations, and I think they're all things to be, you know, mindful of as we explore this. But I guess the reason why I have my, you know, I don't know what the right metaphor is, my pair-up escaping me, is that over the last three years of being on council, I can't tell you how many times we saw a director come before us and tell us we had to renew this contract because we have no time to do anything else. And so I feel this déjà vu experience right now that really has me irked. And it's no disrespect to Mr. Beerling. I understand, you know, what he's saying here, but, you know, I think going through this recurring theme of council having the gun at our heads, saying, "You just got to renew, because, you know, the sky is, you know, falling, and, you know, we have no other choice." That's what truly bothers me, that, you know, we should have it within our wheelhouse to know when the contracts are expiring in advance and begin this process at the safe amount of time so that we don't get to the place that we're being told right now. That's really, that is poor governance, and I want to make sure that we sort of stomp that out wherever possible.
Yeah, I think that's an excellent point, and I would actually think that there's a piece of this that I know I've talked to Mr. Martin about, the controller has brought it up, Mr. Lazarus is aware of it, and that is, we need to get a much better handle on the county's contracts, the ones that are outstanding, what paper they're written on, what the terms are, and make sure that that is really a, you know, an ongoing part of our assessment of these contracts. But like everything else, you need to have the people and the resources together to get that work done. And, you know, I don't know, Mr. Martin, maybe it's something we can use an intern for over the summer, but it's something that we certainly need to get our arms around, because this is not, the directors ought to be bringing it to us, but we ought to be able to hold them accountable. And I think the best way to hold them accountable is to make sure we know what things are expiring, and that we're asking our staff for their work plan for the contracts that are due to expire in the next one and two years.
Well, I appreciate that, but from my view, it's not council's job to come up with a list of contracts. We should be able to rely upon our directors to understand when their contracts are coming up. So we should- So we should absolutely get a list, but we can hold our our directors. Accountable now. For contracts that they should know about. I I will add to Mr. Madden my own. Frustration that again, I'm faced with a you have to do this or else. And making matters worse, it's to a significant campaign contributor. Who has had this contract for as long as anybody can remember. You know, this is exactly the thing that we all ran against. So it it is. To say it's confusing that we would find ourselves in this position, you know, in one way it's confusing, in another way it's completely predictable. And yeah, changes have to be made, and maybe this is a catalyst for some material changes that need to happen right away around here. Anything further on agenda item number twenty two? All right, thank you, Mr. Bierling.
Thank you, sir.
Moving on to agenda item number twenty three, this calls for the approval of the awarding of a contract. For copiers for the county of Delaware, and we have Ms. Burdette here to present this.
Morning, Council. I'm here to award. For contract CP dash one zero three zero two zero to furnish and maintain copiers for Delaware County. The approval to award the lowest responsible bidder to TGI Office Automations. For a period of four years for two million, one hundred and twelve thousand dollars. We advertised this. We we asked for counties, council's approval to advertise it on eleven eighteen of two thousand twenty. It was advertised December thirty first and January seventeenth in the Philadelphia Inquirer. We also advertised it on the county website. We mailed out on twelve sixteen. To the RFP to sixteen vendors. The response date was one nineteen of two thousand twenty one. We got, we received six responses. TGI Automation is the lowest responsible bidder. Prices received were under CoStar contract number zero zero one dash zero one four.
Thank you. Any questions from council? I guess maybe I had a question. This this typically when I've looked at copy machines, and I apologize for taking time to talk about copying machines, but. When we've looked at copy machines. At my work, it had to do with based upon the amount of copies that were made. Right, so it's a, and I I would be hopeful that. The county would be diminishing the amount of copying that it does as it moves to a more paperless environment. Can you tell us sort of how this compares? I don't imagine you know off the top of your head. And you don't even have to know by tomorrow night, but at some point. I would be interested in my, you know, perhaps others on council would be also interested in trying to take a look at. How many copies did we do last year, or the year before, or the year before that? You know, how how can we kind of reduce that?
That's a good question. I do work, I do have. A good background with the copiers because I was running the copy center. The copiers also can scan, and that's what we've been trying to push people to scan more things to a docket. So we can move forward without all this paper. I honestly don't know how many copies we've done, but built into these contracts is X amount of copies that they could print.
Right, because usually they don't charge you for scanning.
No, scanning's and yeah, that's all free. And that's we try to scan to file. We're working with a couple of departments trying to set that up.
All right, well, I know I know the county is trying to take steps to be more. Environmentally friendly and more conscious of our of our footprints here and. You know, obviously to the degree to which we can diminish the amount of copies made, not only does it save us money. But it, you know, saves some trees, so if if sometime, it doesn't have to be tomorrow, it doesn't have to be next week, but if you could. Kind of break down how many copies we've been doing and and maybe we could try to look to sort of. Come up with some goals about how we can reduce that further.
Okay.
Anything else on agenda item number twenty three? All right, thank you, Ms. Burdette.
Thank you.
Moving on to agenda item number twenty four, this calls for the approval of a professional services agreement with Affion Public, and we have. Mr. Kane here to present this. Good morning.
Good afternoon, Council. It's almost good, almost afternoon. I'm here to present a request to county council approval for a proposal from Affion Public. Which is located out of Hershey, Pennsylvania, to assist in the recruitment of key executive positions. In two thousand twenty one that will support the county's strategic initiatives. These include positions such as Commerce Director. A county public health officer, diversity, inclusion and equity officer. A deputy county administrator or prison warden and potentially other positions. Working with Affion. There has been some past experience with the county working with Affion. We actually went out to the market and solicited four organizations. We received two bids back. One from Affion Public and one from SGR. SGR is located in Texas Fort Worth area. We reviewed the proposals carefully. After interviews that were conducted by Stacy Heisey Terrell, my assistant director and myself. And looking at both proposals very carefully. On the area of price, experience and expertise in recruiting these particular key roles. Affion Public provides the best value. We've enclosed the copy of the proposal for council's review. And we would ask for your approval in moving forward on these strategic positions. In two thousand twenty one. I would also note that Mr. Lazarus has been very helpful in extending out to his relationships. To get bids in, to get at least attempt to get bids in. The county also, our department has recently hired a full time. Day recruiter to hire the positions we need on a day to day basis and is actively working on. Public health, elections, and many, many other hires. We may have about. Twenty five positions we're searching for right now, but these are strategic enough to use an outside vendor with a national search approach. So we'd ask for your approval to move forward on these on this contract.
Yeah, I I'd only sort of add here, I I think. You know, the vast majority of hires, I I have confidence that this county is capable of doing in house. But when we speak of these. You know, particular. You know, typically higher level. Director positions. I do think that it's wise that we. Enlist. Services that, you know, can enable us to make sure that we really. You know, put out as as broad a, you know, a a reach as possible, and that we do this in a very comprehensive way, because. I think we owe it to the taxpayers that we, you know, do our very best to fill these roles. As best as possible, so I appreciate the efforts, Mr. Kane. To look at the range of, you know, to look at a number of possible. Groups to assist us here, and I think this is a good way to go.
And I'd like to add, you know, we are in. Just looking at this list of high level management positions that we are trying to fill right now. Really illustrates the fact that we are in a rebuild mode here, you know, at the at the county, we are rebuilding. Our management structure, we're we're rebuilding everything. And to to have all of these things happening concurrently. Really speaks to the need for some support. You know, if if we had one or two high level hires. I would say we are capable of doing this in in house, but we have five, six, seven. And we need them all now. So I I think that this is the right move to work with the professionals that can help us expedite the process and find great talent. We do have good experience. This is the company that we used when we. Did our recruiting and search for it's the executive director position. And I don't, I would speak for everyone, but I was really pleased. With the level of work that they put into it, with the candidate pool that they brought to us and with the result. I will note one thing that I think we paid twenty five thousand dollars for that contract. And it included a really significant amount of public. Outreach and stakeholder input, which is very time consuming and very. Logistically challenging. And I would not anticipate that any of these positions would have that. Aspect. But that's not reflected in the price we're paying, so I just, I note that I I thought when I went through, I. Sort of looked to see if there was a different pricing because it's such a different search. But it it, I mean, we get a discount for volume for sure. But we, it doesn't look like we get any discount for not having that public process, which which I found to be the most. From our standpoint, the most demanding. But I I'm, I'm very happy to go forward with this contract. I I think we got a good product the first time, and I hope that they can really help us. You know, get some talent in place quickly so that we can rebuild.
Thank you, Council. And the the other responses, there'll still be a lot of work done here at the county from myself. Ms. Heisey Terrell, Ms. Ms. Nardi and Mr. Lazarus as we go to search for these key positions. We also note that we've brought on a chief sustainability officer. We brought on a chief information officer, and we may be bringing on. A couple of other positions before we go to Affion that are key for the county, so I think it's a combination effort. But we really do need an expertise and help, particularly with some of the areas that. We think are critically important, diversity, inclusion and equity. We want to find the best candidate for that as well as. Public health officer and a commerce director is critically important.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for Mr. Kane on agenda item number twenty four? All right, thank you, Mr. Kane.
Thank you.
All right, we. Did number twenty five and number twenty six earlier when we were. Having some issues with the internet, so we'll move on to agenda item number twenty seven. Which calls for the approval to negotiate and award an agreement with HelpWare to provide telecommunications for sport. Support for our vaccine slash covid telephone bank operations, and we have Mr. Lazarus here to present this.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This agreement is. Necessary to address the tremendous backlog of calls we are receiving related to vaccination program. This contract was solicited in partnership with Chester County. So that we have the same terms and conditions, same pricing. While the cost may appear to be high, that provides for ten operators for a year's service, so. When we do the math, that comes out to around. After take out the startup costs around sixty five thousand. Remember that if we were to do this in house. We add a sixty one percent burden on salaries, so. I think this actually is a savings over trying to do it in house. This is also a not to exceed amount, so that if we find that we don't need the full staffing, it can be reduced. It also provides us with the flexibility to repurpose the intent. Of the service to handle elections if we can do that. So. It provides the opportunity to work regionally with our partners in the Chester County Health Department. I think it provides a good value to the county. It was done competitively, looking at half a dozen sources as well. So I recommend to council that you approve this agreement. Ms. Devlin, I think, is on the. Call. She'd like to also add to that.
Yes, hi. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of council. Like Howard shared, we have actually initiated our own call center several weeks ago, and we've been working diligently with twelve agents. And certainly we need, you know, we we ask for your support. We're not able to accommodate, you know. The number of calls that we're getting, I've worked where they're in the thousands, so we feel that this would be, you know, the county would be best served by having this. Additional service in place. In addition, just recently, the state is, part of the mandate from the Pennsylvania Department of Health is that counties. Have a call center to address calls coming in and as well as scheduling these calls. And that's our goal is to really, in addition to receiving the calls and giving this information, is to be able to schedule. Calls for individuals, especially that don't have access to the internet, so that need that service. In order to get in to get their covid vaccination. So again, I feel like this is a necessary service at this time.
Mr. Balata is also on the line. Mr. Balata was the coordinator with Chester County Chief Information Officer, and Frank, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Now, as you mentioned, there's just one thing, maybe there were seven vendors that were evaluated across about twenty key pieces of functionality. And cost and. And they selected HelpWare. I did review the contract and review with their CIO. The criteria and they're solid and it's a good choice.
Thank you.
Just a quick question on the the contract. So I see that it's a not to exceed number. But is the the amount of time that it lasts, is that also sort of an up to, like a not to exceed one year? And is there an early termination element to it? I guess just the reason for asking is. I I hope that in less than a year, calls with regard to vaccinations will be moved, but I obviously don't know that answer. So what are the thoughts there?
It's it's a term of, it's a term of up to a year. Terminable by the county on thirty days written notice.
Great.
So we sort of pay per call taker, per hour they're taking calls? Is that how it works?
That is correct.
Okay, so if we find out Kevin Kier's covid next week, which he, I hope is working on. Then then we we could stop and have minimal costs, but if. If in fact we find other other needs through elections or or something else happens with covid. We can, we can, we have the ability to do up to this amount.
That is correct.
And we're able to scale up the number of agents or scale down the number of agents as needed.
And just one other question on it. I I know that. You know, the the folks who have been hired to work the call center. That we've established in-house, you know, they they've been well trained on. Answers and the range of sort of possible questions they might get. How can we be and can we be of similar assurance that the people are going to be answering these calls? Are equally as prepared. To provide the right answers and that the answers are provided in the right manner and the right tone, given the nature of the. You know, severity of the topic at hand.
Yes, we will be working with the company in order to establish frequently asked questions and and specific scripts that we expect. Them to use as part of their call center, you know, their agents will follow, so that's something we'll we'll be working very closely with them initially to make sure. That that's happening and that they understand what the, you know, what our response is and our the details of our scheduling and. You know, specifics to our county. Like I said, you know, Chester County is also using the service, so we'll be working closely with them like we have with our. With our scheduling, you know, the acuity system that we're using currently, both counties use the same system, so we really work closely with Chester County to make sure. That all the information is consistent across the board so that we're sharing, you know, that information and making sure that that's. You know, implemented with this.
Yeah, I mean, I I just underline the importance of it because, you know, this is whether the public realizes or not. And they probably won't, you know, this isn't someone who is a county employee, but they're speaking on behalf of the county, and for many folks. This may be the only time they have an interaction with the county of Delaware. And it's on a topic that obviously is life or death for so many. I just want to make sure that they're reflecting our county well. And that they're giving. The service, you know, in a way that we would. You know, we would be proud of.
And we'll make sure, we'll make sure that that happens. We have weekly meetings with them, so we will be, you know, following up frequently to make sure. You know, that they're following the protocols for Delaware County.
I have two detailed questions. First is a language issue, so I noticed that the contract spoke to Spanish. They would have Spanish operators available. What is the plan for other languages?
We do have, we do have backup systems in place that we're able to access for other languages, and we have shared the other, the list of the, I think it's six. The most frequently spoken languages in Delaware County, and so we've shared that with the company. So there are opportunities for these other languages to be covered, but we actually do have. Beyond this company, we have access to. Language lines that we're able to, you know, translate other languages, and we've used it throughout the, you know, throughout this pandemic, we've been using it, and it's been very. Seamless, you know, the process has been seamless and it's actually worked very well.
Okay, that's good to hear. And then my second question is about hours. Is it still going to be eight thirty to four thirty on weekdays, or is there a plan for evening and weekend?
The plan right now for the for the the agency that we'll be working with, they're working, I think it's eight thirty to four thirty Monday through Friday, and then Saturday they'll be working. I think it's like nine to noon. We have not decided, I mean, we've been working, you know, weekends as well, and the intention is to still have that coverage. So I mean, I don't think of your exact, you know, hours for our, you know, county plan. But I will make sure to review that and have that information for you for tomorrow night.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, we'd like to cover the weekends. It's just so important. We do get a large volume of calls over the weekend, so I think it's important. You know, to have that coverage.
Totally agree with that. I I think as many hours of the week that we can cover, I think the better, you know.
And that's, and we've talked about like offset, you know, if they're covering in the morning on Saturday, maybe we need to cover Saturday afternoon. We're trying to work towards allowing people to, we have two, nine one one and an Ogden. We're trying to work towards allowing people to, um, we have two, um, 911 and an Ogden House. They're the two locations that we're actually running our call centers from. Um, and there are, there should be opportunities for people to actually take some of these calls from home. Um, so that's a a option that we're looking at to have people actually work, you know, off-hours that they could take these calls at home.
Especially for, you know, folks who work essential um, jobs. They work all hours. They work at random times of, you know, and so I think we need to make sure that they uh, that we've got someone who can answer the phone as many hours as we can.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, there's slight verbiage change that I received from Mr. Balata for this agenda item. So I'm just going to make the change. It's just minor.
Okay, and that'll be posted then for uh, those two of you for tomorrow night?
Correct.
Okay. Anything further on Agenda Item Number 27? All right. Thank you, Mr. Balata. Thank you, Ms. Devlin.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda Item Number 28 calls for the approval of a professional services agreement between the County of Delaware and Dr. David Fowler to conduct an assessment of the Delaware County Medical Examiner's Office for a cost not to exceed $40,000, and Mr. Lazarus is here to present this agenda item.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Over the past year, um, the medical examiner's office, medical examiner's office has seen a dramatic increase in the number of cases that have come through primarily due to the COVID pandemic. Uh, that increase has highlighted many of the challenges that medical examiner has. And part of that is through years of underfunding and underinvestment in the Emmys Office. We have received concerns from family members. We have received concerns from funeral directors and their association about the timeliness of um, of responses. I've also received some concerns from the District Attorney's Office. I've worked with Dr. Hellman uh, to increase the pay rate, which the Personnel Board and Council approved. We've worked with him to then to be able to fill his vacancies with the um, with the quality of investigator that he that he needs. Uh, in speaking to him though, that we we still need to look at the investment the county makes in the medical examiner's office. Uh, in speaking with him, he identified Dr. Fowler, with whom he knows professionally but does not have a personal relationship. I spoke with Dr. Fowler. His background is impressive, including service as the Chief Medical Examiner for the state of Maryland, and now assisting other entities like ours in evaluating the efficacy of their medical examiner in coroner operations. I did have one other contact that was recommended to me from the um, Funeral Directors Association, but the quality of Dr. Fowler and his background stood out. He's also able to do his work in a period of three to four weeks upon approval of his agreement, which will help us not only address the short-term concerns, but build into both the capital and operating budget, the items we need over the coming year. That $40,000 is also a not-to-exceed amount, and it does include a significant outreach effort for the involved stakeholders. So I think this um, is a sound agreement. It's one that will help us prepare for the future with operations, with facilities, and appropriate levels of funding for the medical examiner's office. So I ask for your consideration and approval.
So does this anticipate um, guidance both towards staffing and towards facilities?
It's also, yes, and it also includes a review of our operating procedures. Operating in the general sense, not in the uh, autopsy sense. As part of this agreement, I visit, I went out and I, you know, visited Dr. Hellman out at the uh, Fire Life Safety Training Center, and also walked through the facility out at Fair Acres. And as a layman's, from a layman's eye, we do need to make some changes to increase both the capacity to do work and address some of the concerns that led to splitting the operation between two locations. So I think this is timely and needed.
Any other questions for Ms. Lazarus on Agenda Item Number 28? I guess the only thing I would add is that I I know that it's been a heck of a year for uh, the medical examiner's office. Um, you know, from my perspective, they came into this crisis um, not in a good spot. The facilities they had were located in a senior living facility, which seemed like a bad idea to bring a bunch of COVID, COVID uh, folks into into Fair Acres, into that community. Um, and I know they've kind of been, we've been working, trying to put duct tape on uh, problems and try to keep our heads above water for a long time. So I appreciate all the work that Dr. Hellman and his staff have done to 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 try to, try to keep their heads above water. If we can come up with a more comprehensive look at what we can do better, I think that would serve uh, Dr. Hellman, his staff, and all the residents of Delaware County. Um, it's it's something that I think had been neglected, and uh, the impact of that neglect was acutely felt when COVID hit. So I'm supportive of this. All right, if there's nothing further, I'll move on to Agenda Item Number 29, which calls for the approval to advertise a request for proposals to conduct an assessment of the procurement organization structure, operational functions, level of staffing policies and procedures, processes and technology utilization. I presume of Delaware County. Uh, and this is subject to Solicitor's approval. Mr. Lazarus is here to present this.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, and it is for Delaware County. By cosmic accident, in the same conversation I had with Mr. Cagle out, uh, the administrator for Chester County concerning the um, uh, call-in center, I also asked him about procurement. And we talked a bit about the concerns that our council has expressed and what their best practices are. And he let me know that they did go through a um, procedure where they put out a request for proposals to conduct an assessment of their procurement organizational structure. So I also received uh, the document that they use, and they've modified it a little bit uh, to our specific needs. Um, as we go and look to recruit a new Director of Purchasing, uh, this will provide a roadmap for the changes that we need to make, and it addresses many of the concerns that have come up during Council's discussions of other items this morning. Uh, so I think it will give us a approach to best practices. It will address many of the things that we've also talked about, including uh, small and minority business head of sides, environmentally responsible procurement, and then also to Ms. Ruth's specific point, being able to make sure that we have a database with all of our contracts and and other things that would be defined as best practice. So with your approval, we'll issue the RFP, we'll find out what the cost to do that is, and hopefully get a cost um, as a result of this and staffing recommendations on what a best managed, best practice procurement operation looks like for Delaware County.
Thank you, Ms. Lazarus. Any questions or comments from Council?
Well, I just, this goes along with my comments earlier about how we are in this rebuild phase and um, you know, getting expertise. Um, and so that we rebuild and incorporate best practices is, in my opinion, worth the investment. I'm just curious, I, are there consultants out there who specialize in procurement guidance? It seems so, like, who are these consultants?
I am not aware of specifically um, who they are. I can ask uh, Mr. Cagle who they wound up with, but um, it was, it was, when I spoke to him, it kind of struck a nerve for compelling need that we have. And um, if we don't like the responses we get, we're not obligated to issue any contracts.
Right. Thank you.
Anything else for Mr. Lazarus on Agenda Item Number 30? I'm sorry.
I would, the only comment I would make is uh, you know, this is an almost unique situation in that uh, normally even with the number of departures that we've had in the county over, you know, the last 15 months or so, uh, there are people already in place, you know, through uh, a number of different reasons that aren't worth spending the time on. You know, we're in a position where we can rebuild this department from scratch. And I think it's a department that needed to be rebuilt because there are processes that need to be uh, updated because we're going to be taking a look at the administrative code and because um, we were engaged in an initiative with Mr. Matt Madren's help to to, one of the many cultural shifts that we're trying to make at the county, um, it, which is to centralize and professionalize our purchasing and to, to a large degree, kind of standardize practices, at least for different types of purchases. So um, I think it makes a lot of sense since we can rebuild it, that we try to rebuild it uh, you know, to the best standard we can. And and if we can get some input uh, that from a consultant who offers a reasonable proposal, we should go ahead and do that.
All right, anything further for Mr. Lazarus on Agenda Item Number 29? Here and then, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number 30, which is an approval to advertise RFPs for a qualified communications firm to provide strategic communications, advocacy and public relations support for the Delaware County Health Department. And we have Mr. Lazarus and um, perhaps Ms. Devlin. I'm not sure if she's still with us, but uh, we'll let Mr. Lazarus go if if Ms. Devlin's not here.
Thank you. Um, this is actually a partnership with the Foundation for Delaware County, who will be providing the funding for this effort. Um, total cost is not to exceed $100,000, split into two parts. The foundation has the funding for the first part, and then they are raising funding for the second part. The goal is to provide a comprehensive approach to communications and outreach to make the public aware of the role of the Health Department, particularly the parts of our community who have been underserved in the past, to make sure that they're aware of the um, services that the Health Department will offer to them. So um, initially, the partnership was going to be with the foundation issuing the contract, but their board of it, their uh, their board felt uncomfortable with that. They asked if the county would issue and manage the contract, but they would provide the funding, and I offered that we could provide that service. So this is a, other than the time that staff time we would put in to do the administration, this is a no-cost, high-benefit um, operated partnership for the county.
So I'm not sure if I can participate in this at all. Uh, my wife serves on the Board of um, Directors of the Foundation of Delaware County. Um, I I do have a question, though. This agenda item doesn't sort of speak at all to um, some of the issues that you just raised, that this is for the Foundation of Delaware County. Um, and I'm a little confused by what you just said, that we would be the contracting party, but they would provide the funding. Are we going to have a, we have a separate contract with them? Would there be, uh, how do we deal with the credit risk that might be involved there? Could you walk through that a little bit?
Yes, I, when I spoke to um, Ms., uh, Shane and I, let her know that we would have to have a separate funding agreement with, and it would have to be reviewed legally to um, to go down this path. The uh, the reason for the item being on the agenda today is, my understanding from Frances is that she needs to present it to her board this week as well. So there is an intermediate step, uh, which I can lay that out in more detail um, to Council before tomorrow night. There was some backup put on the Agenda Action Review form as well as to the um, they're paying for the uh, agreement, but I can spell that out in a more transparent light.
All right, well, I, you know, I should, I think I still need to refuse myself. Uh, somebody reading my recusal might say, why would he be refusing himself from this? Um, since there is no mention made of 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 other entities, but uh, we'll just have to have have that question unanswered then, I suppose. Anything further for Mr. Lazarus on Agenda Item Number 30? All right, uh, Agenda Item Number 31 calls for the approval to advertise an RFP to obtain task order contracts for architectural and engineering services. And Mr. Lazarus is here to present this as well.
Thank you again. Um, our intent is to put together requests for proposals for uh, small and medium-cost design work that the county needs. Uh, those will be solicited on a best value approach, of which cost is a um, is a factor. The goal is to have multiple um, engineer and multiple architectural firms that we can tap for the requirements to help us save time and effort in um, in soliciting separate agreements. Because we have multiple awards with no guaranteed minimum, when a need comes up, we will get proposals from um, two or more architectural or two or more engineering firms to fulfill that need. So it um, I would think it satisfies Council's stated objective of having things competitively procured. So the master agreements will be competitively procured, and then within the structure, we'll be able to um, also get competing proposals. It can save us several months off of needs because we have pre-established rates, we have pre-qualified firms, and then we can issue uh, task orders up to a certain amount to have the um, the work done more, done quickly and uh, responsibly. It's a best practice. I've used it before, and I think it satisfies all the uh, concerns about, as I said, with competition, but also provides us a chance to provide good customer service.
Well, I would like to say that when I saw the agenda and I saw this item on it, I got very excited about this RFP because this is, um, you know, having a list of pre-qualified go-to technical advisors when it comes to architectural and engineering needs for smaller projects. Um, you know, typically, my understanding is it was people just, you know, department heads would just go to whoever we used to use, you know, because, because that's, that's all they had, uh, to contact or the card for. Um, I think this is much more thoughtful of an approach. I've spoken to our peers in Montgomery County and asked them about their approach to this type of um, expertise, and and Montgomery County does a similar, has a similar, similar pool of pre-qualified contractors for this type of work. So I am very excited about this, and I think it will expedite and make more equitable the smaller contracts that are, that or the smaller advisements that go out all the time.
Any other questions or comments from Council on Agenda Item Number 31? All right, thank you, Mr. Lazarus.
You're welcome.
Agenda Item Number 32, um, Mr. Martin was here to speak about Central Tax Collection Department Request for Refunds.
Tomorrow night, I'll be seeking approval of one refund total of $1,429.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Martin? Agenda Item Number 33 calls for the approval of appointments at the Greenspace Task Force, and I believe Ms. Schaefer is going to speak on this item.
Well, just to say that tomorrow, we will have 13 members. Um, their names will all be posted later today with the agenda. Um, and I will speak to the process and the selection a little bit more tomorrow.
Thank you, Ms. Schaefer. Left us with a cliffhanger. That's always good for ratings. Uh, Agenda Item Number 34 calls for the request for the, by the Controller's Office for the payment of current bills. Uh, any questions from Council on Agenda Item Number 34? All right, Agenda Item Number 35 calls for communications from the Executive Director, Mr. Lazarus.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, my intent is to communicate to Council some updates on sort of the blanket purchase authorities that you provided for PPE and vaccine-related um, procurement, as well as an update on the information we got on the um, childcare assistance program that is put in place.
Thank you, Mr. Lazarus. Uh, Solicitor's report, Mr. Martin?
Well, tomorrow, I'll be seeking the approval to file two petitions for the termination of parental rights with the Orphans Court. That's the only thing to report right now.
Thank you. Uh, the next item calls for public comments. Um, Ms. Ruth, or do you have access to the public comments section to see if we have any public comments?
I do. We've got quite a few that are very similar. That go largely to uh, opening of the schools, but let me um, so uh, I'm just okay. Uh this was received yesterday from Donna Sassman, 148 Lakeview Drive, Media, PA. I have attempted to contact Delaware County COVID-19 hotline many times, and in the three times I spoke to personnel have yet to receive a reply to this question. What are the procedures or plans to determine when eligible 1A individuals receive vaccine administration appointments? I was told once that appointment scheduling was based on when the individual submitted the county interest form. This cannot be true, as I submitted my form before my husband, and he has received an initial vaccine last week at the Yaden facility. A public and complete explanation of Delaware County's vaccine distribution plan and the criteria used to prioritize 1A eligible individuals to receive the vaccine would do much to alleviate the confusion and frustration in procuring the vaccine in these stressful times. I don't know if anybody wants to speak to that.
Well, perhaps we could ask Ms. Halt to speak on that tomorrow night, but she goes or Dr. Oh, when they when they go to agenda item number five tomorrow, you know, and again, we can only speak to sort of what the county does with its dosage. We have no ability to opine as to what the other, you know, twenty-four sites do with theirs.
Yeah, I guess I would just the only thing I would say today is to emphasize that the county only schedules for the county locations, and we do not schedule for anybody else. But I I would, I think that's appropriate that Ms. Halt or Dr. Almahani should address how it works within the county system. Chrissy Condry, 316 Netherington Drive, Brumal, PA. In your last meeting, you replied to Mike Goudy's comment that the Chester County Health Department was in the process of giving new guidelines to superintendents. You implied that the six-foot distancing rule would be changed to allow kids to get back to school. Where are the new guidelines? We replied and said that they were sharing draft guidance with the superintendents, which I believe is correct, Dr. Taylor, right? That they were sharing draft guidance, but I don't think we said that they they were waiting for the CDC, I think, to address the six-foot issue, weren't they?
Yes, that is correct. They were sharing guidance with the superintendents and looking for input from the superintendent, and then they were also waiting for the CDC to issue their last guidance, which they just issued this weekend.
From Allison Leff, 432 Holly Bush Road, Bryn Mawr, PA. Please read the following petition signed by almost 2,000 people into the public comments during the Delaware County Council meeting. Mr. Martin, your direction on that, it's I I don't know that public comment means reading 2,000 signatures, but I will defer to you.
Does the email, I'm not asking you to read them, does the email list 2,000 signatures?
Yes. No, the email does not. The petition itself does.
And and the petition lists a quantity of signatures?
Yes.
I think you should read read the petition and leave it at indicating to council that it is represented that there are 2,000 signatures to the petition.
Okay. This is the petition that was sent in by Ms. Leff. Fully reopen schools in Pennsylvania. We, the undersigned, have advocated for schools to reopen fully. We have advocated to our national leaders, state senators and legislators, policy institutes, our health departments, our teachers' unions, our school boards and our school superintendents. There is no state or federal mandate preventing schools from opening. Decisions as to how and when schools move to full or phased in reopening are made by local school districts and their school boards. Everyone claims to be eager to reopen schools safely, and yet most public schools across the state remain stuck in a limbo of frustrating half-steps, ineffective semi-virtual schooling, and no path to restoring normalcy. Majority of people on school boards and our superintendents are not comfortable making school reopening decisions without the support of those who advise and create school reopening guidelines. Those who write the guidelines continue to reply that the decision is not theirs, and they are only providing guidance, not mandates. Each ducks their responsibility and points fingers at the other. According to the American Academy of Pediatrics President, Dr. Beers, children absolutely need to return to in-school learning for their healthy development and well-being, and so safety in schools and in the community must be a priority. No single action or plan will eliminate the risk of virus spread at a school, but we have seen how face masks, physical distance, and other measures when combined can significantly lessen the risks. According to the Harvard Global Health Initiative, evidence gathered this fall around the world and in the U.S. suggests that schools can open even in conditions of wide community spread and achieve low and even near zero transmission in the school building. This evidence, combined with the benefits to learners of in-person schooling and harms of remote schooling, suggests the time has come to pursue in-person learning across most schools' contexts. The time is right for those in power to do what's right. Our kids' childhood is too precious and short to be spent waiting for courage from those who are too afraid to open the school doors and let our kids in. Enough is enough. Who will step up to fully reopen the schools for our children? And it is represented that there are 2,000 signatories. I would note that other than identifying the district in which the people claim to reside, there is no address. From Christine Gandy, 124 Treaty Road, Drexel Hill. As a resident of Delaware County with three children in the public school systems, I am emailing you to strongly advocate in getting our children, especially the youngest students, back to school five days a week. It is absolutely necessary for the CCHD to amend their guidance to allow schools to use three feet of distancing as opposed to six feet. Bucks County has been using three feet since the beginning of the school year, and many schools there are open five days. The schools are not experiencing high levels of transmission based on using three feet instead of six feet. Again, I think that it is urgent that our children return to the classrooms for five full days. Parents who want to keep their children home already have that option and can continue to do so. As a taxpaying resident, I want the same option to be able to send my children to school for five full days. At the recent Haverford School District School Board meeting, Dr. Rouge said that she would return kids to our building five days a week if physical distancing was decreased, but without that guidance, she is unable to move forward. Please provide that guidance for the Haverford School District and the surrounding school districts. I would just like to make one comment here, which is that the council, County Council has no control over what the school districts do, and I would note that one of the agenda items this week was to educate, was to was to do a public was was to hire a firm to do a public education campaign as to what a health department is. A public health department is a public health department. It is not a political football, and it does not report to council. It reports to the state and the Secretary of State, and it gives public health guidance. And that is what I understand the Chester County Health Department, who is our public health department for purposes of the COVID pandemic, has done is is give guidance. I would also note that we speak to the commissioners in Bucks County several times a week. They indicated that they did not reduce their guidance to three feet. They reduced their guidance to three feet with a number of mitigation levels, a number of mitigation steps in place, and I believe that a lot of the same mitigation steps are addressed in the CCD guidance, which is really what the Chester County Health Department has based its guidance on. So I would encourage people to recognize there's some nuance in this and recognize that our role here is extremely limited. I don't know if anybody else wants to say anything else.
I guess I would only just add that, and Ms. Ruth implied this, but I don't know that she directly said it, that that we don't. She said that we don't have any authority over what school boards do or school districts do. We also don't have any authority to tell the CCHD to do anything. They they operate as a public health department and make their own decisions without regard to sort of direction from us. So I I've gotten a number of emails telling us that we should have the CCHD change their guidance. We don't have that power. Another thing I would add to, and I did not hear what the superintendent of Haverford School District said. So the email says that the the superintendent said that they are unable to open in the absence of guidance changing. I'm not aware of any legal impediment that that would that would make that statement true. They may be unwilling to open, but they are not unable to do so. And perhaps, again, that's not what they said. I didn't I didn't hear the meeting, but to the extent that was stated, I don't think it's necessarily accurate.
Thank you. The next letter from Lynn Emilio, Campwood Road, Villanova, PA, is actually virtually identical to the one from Ms. Gandy, so I will not read it. Other than to say that she did send in the identical email. From Jenny Landis, I'm sorry, the email is Jenny Landis. The it is signed Jenny England, 119 Wood Lane, Haver Town, PA. During the last council meeting, this is the same question that was asked by Ms. Covney, and it has been answered. We did discuss that guidance had been circulated. From Meredith Mercante, 25 Dartmouth Lane, Haverford, PA. This is also about the schools. It is a rather lengthy email, but it appears to be different, so I will read it. I am writing today in regards to opening up Delaware County school districts to offer full-time in-person instruction for all our students. We have learned over the last year that schools are some of the safest indoor places for both kids and adults with very low or no transmission between student and teaching staff, even when COVID cases are on the rise in the community. Along with other safety mitigations, mask-wearing, hand washing, and proper testing, students should be able to return to the classroom with a distancing requirement of three feet minimum. This has been proven throughout other countries, states, and other counties that have been in full-time in-person learning since fall 2020. If the minimum distancing requirement is reduced from six feet to three feet, districts would be able to transition their youngest learners to full-time in-person learning for the remainder of the 2021 school year. The state government and unions have failed our children this year with instituting virtual and hybrid learning throughout the 2020-2021 academic year. Our kids have become political pawns in a fight between unions and districts with the goalposts forever shifting. It is no surprise that vaccines are a major part in irradiating this virus, but we are to wait until every teacher and student has been vaccinated before. But if we are to wait until every teacher and student has been vaccinated before we return to school, I fear we won't even be back in the classroom in time for the 2021-2022 school year. America stands alone in imposing excessive distancing in schools. The CDC guidelines recommend six-feet distancing in schools, even though the WHO, the AAP, Harvard, and Brown experts, and the National Academies of Science, Engineering, and Medicine support three-feet distancing when masks are being used. Many school districts, including my district, Haverford School District, will not transition students back to the classroom full-time until the Chester County Health Department revises their distancing recommendations from six feet to three feet or four feet. This makes it impossible for students to be in the classroom more than two days a week. Recently, Radnor School District consulted with the CCHD regarding reducing their distancing to three feet in the classroom, allowing elementary school students to return to full-time learning. Radnor was granted this request and will be bringing back elementary students to the classroom full-time for full-time learning in a couple of weeks. If CCHD makes this distancing guideline change, the more districts would be able to provide full-time instruction to those kids and families who need it. Most private and parochial schools across the state have been successfully opened full-time for the school year, while most public school districts have been either partially or fully remote. The lack of consistent education for all our children will prolong and encourage inequities in our community. Furthermore, throughout this past year, our children's mental health has declined, and that is the real emergency. All over the country, mental health emergencies and hospital visits by kids are skyrocketing. The prolonged isolation, depression, and anxiety that stem from learning by yourself on a computer all day are taking a massive toll on our kids and families. My family is part of a growing number of families across multiple counties that are unsatisfied with the level of education our children are receiving and growing impatient with insufficient guidance provided by state, county, and school districts. Please help us advocate for our children since they do not have a voice in this fight. Thank you for your time. Again, I would just point out, Radnor was not granted an exception to the guidance. Radnor apparent, I mean, I'm sure that is not the case. I think what happened is Radnor went in with a plan and discussed their mitigation efforts with with the CCHD. I would certainly invite anybody whose school district is in a position to do that, that they encourage their school boards and their administrators to do so, but I I would be shocked if there is somewhere in the CCH guidance an exception for Radnor School District. Ms. Taylor, Dr. Taylor, do you have any further information on that now? So I I think I would encourage Ms. Mercantante and the other people who she is working with to get their districts to put together mitigation plans and go talk to the Chester County Health Department and determine if are they sufficiently comfortable with their plans to go to a lesser distancing?
Ms. Ruth, just for the interest of time, how many more of the very similar emails do we have? And as you're sort of looking at that, I I will just also, you know, sort of piggybacking on what's been said prior. The great frustration here for council is that we are getting endless emails and calls, and, you know, as we've said over and over again, we have zero authority here. And I'll go one step further, which is that when members of council, myself included, expressed our, you know, the great importance of in-person education at many points throughout this pandemic to the DCIU and to school board, superintendents, we were told in no uncertain terms to butt out because it's their decision, not ours, and, you know, our our views were no longer welcomed. So I I just get frustrated every time we go through this same Groundhog's Day every two weeks of hearing the endless emails and phone calls from frustrated parents whose frustration I certainly share. But whoever's, you know, putting them toward, you know, directing them to send this to council, I'd like for them to know that we have zero authority here, and our opinions are no longer welcomed by many, I'm not going to say all, but many of the superintendents and school board members who are represented via the DCIU.
Okay, we have a comment from Amy Bannister at 323 Holland Street, Kremlin, PA, that is not about the schools, and it's very short. Will the final pay study presentation be discussed during tomorrow's county council meeting? I don't think I see it on the agenda. Or is the 21721 presentation private when we know the outcome? The answer is that it has been postponed for presentation to council to allow further discussion with some of the county departments. And it you it will be on the agenda at a future meeting. If that's correct, Mr. Lazarus?
Yes, council member, that's correct.
Thank you. From Olivia Thorne, the League of Women Voters Delaware County President. She gives a PO box, but I happen to know where she lives. Can I read the PO box, Mr. Mr. Martin? PO box, 131 Wallingford, PA, which I believe is the league's address. The League of Women Voters has GIS maps for each municipality with wards, precincts when they exist. These were created so vote 411 could produce a ballot for each voter showing only people they can vote for. We would be happy to share those files with you. Some municipalities shared their GIS maps with us as well. We have not done the GIS map for district justice races, and we'll need to pay another $1,000 plus to do that. So if you do it, I hope you can share it with us so that we don't have to pay for repeating this mapping. Since we are all due to see Mrs. Thorne in approximately half an hour, we can talk about that then. Liz Coratore from Walling, she does not give an street address. From Kathleen Henkel, 5 Wells Fleet Way, Media, PA. This is another question about the schools continuing to ask us to advocate to the CCHD for reducing the distance from six feet to three feet in their guidance. From Diane Simon, a member of the Delaware County Women's Commission, 4201 Somerset Lane, Upper Chi Chester, PA. I want to express my support for the extension. He is requesting women across the county have a longstanding concern with the cost and quality of childcare. For the first time, they feel that this issue is being addressed. This extension will go a long way in helping working women who have to make a decision to stay home and lose income in order to watch their children. A large majority of healthcare workers are women who also need this. A large majority of healthcare workers are women who also need this childcare support. The program has been tweaked to better serve the needs of working families. Please continue to give this initiative your stamp of approval. The other comments came in after we started public comments, and I will defer them to tomorrow night.
Thank you, Ms. Ruth. And, you know, I guess the only thing I would say is that, you know, I too am frustrated by many things. But specifically with regard to these issues, I'm frustrated by, you know, as a parent with children, I'm frustrated by the state of our schools. I am frustrated, as Mr. Madden has said, when we get these emails, that people are not understanding, and maybe failure is mine. People are not understanding of what constraints, what, what sort of abilities County Council has to do to effectuate change. We try to, we've tried to do what we can and we will continue to try to do what we can, but it's, we're trying to point out to people, not for purposes of sort of passing the buck, as somebody alluded to earlier, but for purposes of just educating people as to what we literally can and can't do. There are limitations as to what we can and can't do here, and I think others have spoken about it here, so. But I appreciate the sentiments that everybody is raising and understand the passion with which they, they advocate on behalf of their children. I think all of us feel that passionately about the well-being of our children, and even if we don't have children, we feel passionately about the well-being of others' children. With that, I suppose I went into County Council comments then, so I'll leave that. Those are my comments. Any, anything further from others? All right, well, I would entertain a motion to then adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you.